Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Prescott City Council Study Session. For the record, today is June 10th, 2025. It's 1:00 P. M. And obviously, very many people want to hear about this new OpenGov. So thanks for all the tourism people here. We'll get to your agenda item shortly thereafter. So we'll start with roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Grady.
Present.
Councilman Montoya.
Still here.
And Councilman Moore.
Here.
All are present.
Cindy Clark, would you like to read the first item on our agenda today?
Sure. Presentation and Discussion Regarding Training on the City's New Transparency Software, OpenGov.
Thank you, Sarah. Mayor and Council, we're here to talk about OpenGov. And yes, we're a little disappointed in the audience, but we'll get over it. They're watching remotely, I'm sure. We've, again, been talking about this for about a year. We've been implementing. It's been a huge effort. When to talk a little about, about the product is not only for budget, which of course we issued back in April on the platform, has transparency components, and it has a purchasing component. If Council remember when we brought it to you, it's going to help make more efficiency and transparency in our procurement process, bringing that all online and across the overall network. But we did do the budget this year, as we discussed. Big effort across the city. All the departments had to learn the new software, and of course, finance staff put a big effort in. Of course, mostly Catherine Boland, our senior accountant, led the way with that, leading the project. And today, she's going to walk you through some of the components. It's not really intended to be an all-inclusive training session, more to show you the products and what is available, and how you can get more help on it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Catherine.
Thank you, Mark. Mayor Good, members of the City Council, I'm so thrilled to be here showing this off. The purpose of this, as Mark said, it's not really to go through detailed budget. It's, it's more to demonstrate how to navigate the system and how to get the information that you need to get to. So there's going to be a transparency portion of it, but also part of this too is to remember that the, the budget book that's online and the capital book that's online is also part of the transparency and also part of this OpenGov platform. And it's a very powerful platform, and hopefully, you'll see that by the time we get to the end of this. And I'm going to kind of go through this very interactively, because that's what this is about. It's interactive, so you can click and drill into a lot of things. So there's going to be some predetermined views that we're going to look at, but really, we're going to be drilling farther than that, because there are so many options that you have to look for data that you can't just like set up all the views for all the things that you want to look at. This tool is not only for access, but it gives you the ability to analyze that information. So you can filter and sort and look at this information in all different ways, and so it's just very powerful to be able to do things like that. The easiest way to access this is to go to the City of Prescott website. So when you're here, you go to Government, and then you go down to the tile that says Data Transparency. And within that, you, takes you to all of the transparency data functions. You've got your financial reports, you're familiar with that. That's where your ACFIR and various reports like that are. You've also got this public safety tax information that we've added as a tile, so because that's one of the top topics right now, and we want to make sure people can get to that information and review it. And we also have the current budget process reports. And down here, this OpenGov Financial Transparency is probably the, is the last thing that we'll cover, and that's where we'll really dive into some of the detail information. So first, I'm going to briefly take you through the public safety tax information, so you can see what's there. So the beauty of OpenGov is it gives you the ability to create the story with the numbers. You're not just throwing numbers out at people and letting them interpret it themselves. You're creating a story, you're creating the, the explanations of what is this? What am I trying to do? Why are we recording this? So within this, on the public safety, this information is as of last night. So you can see the year-to-date information compared to budget. We've, we've just booked 1.7 million in the tax revenue. And as you remember, this, this tax did not become effective until April 1st. So this first year is a partial year, and things are going to start popping in. And operating expenses, all of these are from last night. We are integrated with our accounting system. So we have operating expenses of 182,000, we've got capital expenditures of 31,000, so it just kind of gives you a high-level view of that. And then down below, you'll see more information about facility needs and the kind of the priorities that were set on those requirements. Here's your capital budget right here, and you can see the multi-year. You can see Fire Department, you can see all the various projects they have, you can see the Police Department and all their various projects. For your total capital, you can, there's also an operating section. So you can drill into the operating lines for both Fire and Police. And you can see, these numbers were up above, the year-to-date numbers, so you can see 182,000 on the operating. And you've also got a future year projections in this model, too. And then you've also got the community, the anticipated community impacts. So all of this great information here, all of it built on OpenGov platform.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you. Just a quick question. I know this is a new program, but as we progress over years, will previous year's data stay there? So like, if somebody wants to do something comparative, is '25 going to fall off, or is '25 going to stay there as we go forward, so that people can look back maybe at something historical?
We can have the historic, we can do whatever we want in those regards. We can have the historical, and we can have like, like when we get to the end of fiscal year '25, we can have actuals fiscal year '25. We start in the fiscal year '26, we'll have a year-to-date. And then, and so, so on and so forth. Yes, absolutely.
I can see how some people would be like, looking back, and I know for like my business, for example, I do, you know, year-over-year, month-over-month comparisons, for example, you know, be able to look at comparative data for previous years. So it might be nice to have that maintained. Just a thought.
Right. And this is just the story, pulling that information out. You can actually drill into that information and a lot of the history in the actual transparency site, too. So it's not, this is what we brought up as being the most important right at that point in time. Yep. Good question. So now I'll go into the budget. So you're probably familiar with this page. Left-hand side are the budget documents. So when we get the online budget book done, we will actually have another selection up above those city budget documents that has the online budget book. And we're also going to add one for the capital plan book, so that it's more easily accessible once, once the budget's approved. On the right-hand side, you have all of the current processing. So on that, May 16th, 2025, is where we put all of the current information that we are utilizing to prepare this budget. So you're familiar with the workshop presentation slides, always a good piece of information to go back to to review if you forget some things. You've got the City Manager Proposed Budget, which really is the, is our 2026 budget. Then you have the Capital Plan, and then, once again, the Public Safety Tax Initiative, because that's kind of a big topic right now. And one other thing I wanted to note, too, is that I know that on webpages, that sometimes it's difficult to print out some of these pages, and I know we want to really discourage people from printing things, but we are going to develop, trying to develop a dashboard for the council, so that we can house all of this information in one place for you, so you can go there, so you don't have to go, go to the website, go to here, go to there. You know you can go to this dashboard and get everything that you need. So that's in development. Okay, let's go into the budget. So here's our online budget book. So it looks very much like a website. The functionality is very much like a website. You've got your menus at the top, your drill downs into this information, all of it there again housed in the OpenGov platform. So this front page is kind of like a budget in brief, and we're still refining some of these pages, so you'll occasionally see some more information pop onto these pages. But you have your high-level stuff as, in here is like your total revenues, total expenses, table formats, graph formats, that type of thing. Overview, I'm just, I'm not going to go through all of these, but I'll just highlight some things. So the overview really is the City of Prescott's information. So that's message from the City Manager, encourage you to read that. That's information, that's what, the big topics right now that drove this budget. So you would probably benefit from reading that. It has our investments and our employees. So you can see what the COLA, the Merit, things behind that. What drove the operational things this year? What drove, what, what's the idea around the capital plan this year? So you can see all those kinds of things in there. One other thing I'll point out, community profile. So there's another example. You can kind of get a historical perspective. You can see what's the population. You can go there and you can get demographics. You can see the city versus the county. You can see the historical graph of the population. You can get tidbits of how many FTEs per thousand in population. So just little pieces of information like that. So it's a good place to go. The recommended budget is what it is, the recommended budget. So fiscal year '25, this is the high-level summary of the proposed budget from the City Manager. So you've got your totals. You've got lots of information in here. You have your operating budget by departments. You've got your total budgets by departments. You've got background information, which talks about the capital amounts. You've got your operating funds by funds, your total city budget by funds, and so forth. So there's just a lot of information in detail. You've got your, a summary of your fund balances also in there for the total city. Recommended budget, I'll just touch on a few things. This also talks about the budget process, how we go about it. It talks about the basis, how we do amendments to the budget. Your calendar, if you forget what the calendar is, you can always come here and get that. If you want to see what the major revenues are for the city, you can go in here and see the revenues. You can go in, and one other thing in here is positions. I know that can sometimes be important. We want to see, well, how many people did we add this year? So you can go here, and you can see how many positions for, by department? So it's kind of a neat historical perspective. So we went from 588 last year to 610.5 this year.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Thank you. Catherine, could you show everybody how you can take some of these charts and graphs and print them for a presentation or anything you're doing with the community? We don't have to chase down Mark anymore for slides. It's all there.
Absolutely. I'll go, I'll catch that in just a sec. Let me finish this one. So the positions, you can tell what the changes were, so there's a narrative on the changes. You can also see what's been the historical place we've added positions. So you can see a five-year history where we've added positions. You can see the historical levels back all the way to 2007, for example. So let me go back here, and I'll show you if you do. Now, the, printing the page, just like, you know, like a webpage, page, it's hard to print in the formatting. But some of these tables, like if you just want to take this graph that shows the total city budget, let's say that's, you know, I can't remember all those numbers, I'm just going to print this out, take it with me to the meeting. You can come here, and you can print, print that chart in any of these formats. So that's real handy. You can print it to a PDF. You can email it to yourself, whatever you want to do. So there's that. And once again, we are going to, on the dashboard, our intention is also to create a PDF document that we can house, that, so that we can print a full page. Like what if you want to print out the entire public safety story page, then we'll have that available for you guys. Okay, now I'm going to move on to, all right, fund balances. So you have these fund summaries, and you've got the department plans, just like what they sound like. So fund summaries, got all your funds. You've got your general fund, you've got your special revenue funds, you can go to streets, bed tax, you can go look at the enterprise funds, there's golf course, water, wastewater, all of the funds are in here. So there's also a fund structure overview, so you can actually see, well, how is our structure made up for people that are new or the community? Maybe they don't know what's, what funds are in the city. They can actually go here, and here's the total budget, and they can see how all those funds are broken out into governmental funds, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and so forth. And this has some descriptions on what these funds are. So if they're like, what the heck is that? What are, what is the street fund? It'll tell them a little bit about what those funds are. And then this is just a little chart that shows how many, like if you have a City Manager Department, for example, actually has general fund dollars and special revenue fund dollars. So you can have multiple funds within a department. So that just kind of gives you a little information there. And I'm just going to go through one or two of these funds. So here's the general fund, for example. That one is usually a good topic. So revenues versus expenditures on the general fund, there's a table format. Revenue trends, you can get your revenue trends from here. You can get the table of the actual data. And then you can actually read about what makes up our, our tax revenue. It talks about the sales tax, so we'll actually go into detail about what that is, and how, how much, what the tax is for the city. It'll go about the makeup of the tax. It'll talk about the property tax and what that levels those are at. It'll talk about what our intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenues. So it'll go talk about those things. And then there's the general fund expenditures. So you can kind of see by department what the expenditures are and so forth. And then fund balance, of course. It'll summarize everything into a fund balance for all of these fund statements. And then let's go to, so all these, pretty much all of these fund summaries are set up in the same way, so I'm not going to go through those. Department plans, so same thing. Now, now instead of looking at funds, we're looking at departments. So within the departments, so let's take Airport, for example. They're all set up so that you can kind of see the structure of that department. You can see their mission, their services, their objectives, their, their accomplishments. You can see their performance measures. You can see summaries of their expenditures. You can see their revenue sources and how many FTEs they're planning on having or proposing in the current budget and their historical perspectives. So you can see all those kinds of things. There's also kind of a department overview, too, so you can kind of see, well, what's the total by department? So you can really get a chart, so you can compare all the departments. Okay, so let's move on. Under Moore, there's a couple of things. So there's capital projects. You can actually access the capital plan book. This is just a capital overview, and it's just part of the online budget book. So it's just information that needs to be in the budget book. So there's a summary in here, but there's also, you can access the capital plan here, and we'll come back around to that, because I want to point out, excuse me, one other thing first. The appendix has some good information also. You have your resolutions, you've got your official budget forms. You've also got your full authorized position listing. So there's everybody, every department, it shows the ranges, it shows the grades, it's, it's got all of that information here, very handy. And also in here, you've got your budget policy. One of the other ones, this is the most recent pension funding policy. So you can go there and see what your pension, unfunded liability, your funding ratios, all that kind of stuff. So all this information is now really accessible on the OpenGov platform, easy for the community, easy for you to access. And that is the point. Okay, so I'm going to go back to the capital book. And you can also, as you remember, access the capital book from that other page that we went through. But I'm going to go here, hopefully. Maybe I will go back. Okay, I'm going to go here, because it wasn't liking my clicks. Okay, so this is the capital budget book. So this is the five-year plan. So you can kind of see, it's laid out on the front page, it's got a lot of the summary pages. So you have, it's set up by category, so sometimes you just have one department, and that's the category, or you might have multiple categories within a department. So Airport, for example, has the city-only funded projects. You can see what those are. You have the grant-funded projects, you can see what those are. You can see the anticipated of what, what, where we expect to end up in fiscal year '25, and you can also see what's budgeted for '26 and all the way through '31. And actually, some of the expenses in '31, that's total project costs, it's just too far out for us, so we would, would have combined them all into fiscal year '31. So there's that summary. And I'll go into a couple of these specifically. And then down below, we have some, we have a little table, and the expenditures by type. And then we also have, so by type meaning construction versus engineering and architecture, building infrastructure, that type of thing. And then you have your funding sources, so you can see how all of these projects are getting funded. And you have the table for that information above down below. Okay, so now, well, let's drill into a couple of these projects. So if you want more information specifically on one of these projects, you can come over to this tab here, the Projects tab, and you can get all of those projects. And you can get the description, you can get the justification, you can get further information on that project. So let's just pick a couple here, and I'll demonstrate a couple of them. This Payment Preservation. So let's look at that. So you've got the description of what the project is, you've got the justification, you've got the anticipated expenses by type, table form, and then you've got the funding sources. It's all coming from the streets fund, so there's not multiple funding sources on this one. So let's go look at another one. So here's the, the water production and intermediate pump station. There again, same thing, description, justification, expenditures, it's anticipated on being ending in fiscal year '26. Funding sources, all from WIFA contracts. And I'll just do one more, and that'll be it. Let's try this one. So as we develop these, we can put more graphics, and we can pretty it up, and we can do all those kinds of things and expand on more of the information. This is, so this will continue to be refined as we work on this. So there's an example of another project for the Bollards. There's the funding sources. So you can see this one does have a couple sources of funding. There's a federal grant along with the streets fund. So tons of information there. You could spend all day drilling into these projects. Okay, so now I'm going to go to the transparency site. I'm going to go, let me close these, I'm going to go here. And a couple ways you can get to that. You saw on that one, that one page where it had that transparency tile, you can get there, there. Or there's also this button that you can go to, OpenGov Financial Transparency. That will take you right to the site. And this is the data that you can drill down into. So you've got reports, so I've got an annual report, a monthly report. Functionality is the same, so I'm just going to go through some of the annual reports. Monthly just gives you some month-over-month, year-over-year type information. We also have stories in here. We've only got one story right now, which once again is that public safety tax story. But we can add, as we get topics that we want to have highlighted, that we want to have out there for the public to be able to view, we can add any number of stories in here to condense that information into something that's more digestible. So let me go into Reports. All right, so there's a few, like I mentioned earlier, there's a few pre-saved views, and that is, you can go so many different ways with this information and drill into just about anything, that I just kind of picked high-level directions to go, like all revenues, all expenditures, for example, or capital, so that we can drill into those. So this first one here is this all-city revenues versus expenditures. You can hover over each column, and you can get the detailed information on it that way. You can also come over here to the columns, and you can highlight on the expenses, and you can get all of the expenditures, for example, information. Revenues, same thing. You've also got the same information is down here in a table. So functionality-wise, all of these, it kind of works, there's a bar for the whole page, and then there's also a drag bar for the table. So just know, if you're just kind of like, I can't get down there, that there's two different ways of getting there. So this is the information that's basically up above, and how I sorted this report was to have revenues by type and expenditures by category. So you could have this actually filtered by department, if you wanted to see it by department, instead of by category, for example. So we'll go through some of those. So up here, you see how there's the carrot that's, that doesn't, isn't highlighted? I can't drill any further into this line. So the functionality-wise, like right here, I have that black arrow here, that means I can drill down further. So I can click on that and go into there. So now you have what makes up intergovernmental revenues. You can see it's all of these things, state income tax, VLT, federal grants, state grants, county contributions, all of those things for all of these years. And you can scroll over, here's another scroll bar. That's one thing about on a laptop, because sometimes you can't see the whole thing, so you can scroll over and get fiscal year '26 and estimated '25. Now, one thing I wanted to point out here, functionality-wise, so you might, here, you see how I just opened up one section? All these other sections are not opened up. Well, you can also come up here and expand all of them, open up everything at once. Well, you can also come up here and expand all of them, open up everything at once if you want to. But that's, with the whole city, that's going to be a little big, long list, so you may not want to do that. Let's collapse that. And so up here, the difference up here, this is more of a expand to get to the data, whereas if you come up here, this is a filtering mechanism. So let's say we want to look at revenues again. So let's click on revenues. Now I've filtered to revenues. I didn't just expand it, I filtered to it, so now I only have revenues down here. And then let's say I want to go into intergovernmental. I can click on here and get directly into, now I'm just on intergovernmental. Now you notice down here that I don't have that carrot anymore? So that means I can't drill down any further. This is as far as I can drill down. This is the account number, line item, expense. So the only farther down I could get is like for an invoice or something like that, and we don't, we can't drill down to that level in here. So you can get right to the line item detail. And I'm going to move on to another view here. Let's go to the sources of revenue specifically. So here's another option you have. So instead of that other chart, you can actually change the charts depending on what the information is. Some of them have more meaning than others, obviously. Something like this has, isn't going to mean as much to a chart like this. You could also do line charts, you can do like the chart we had in the previous view, or you can have the pie chart. So the pie chart is set right now at 25, 26. So you can actually, this, there's a little drag bar here, if you want to see what it was like in the previous year in that same view. So you can go back and forth between all of your views, depending on how you want to view the information. So let's look at, let's say we want to, so now we know we can filter by these things, but let's say, well, now I want to know, well, what is the general fund revenue? How do I get to that? I can't pick that anywhere here. So that's where the filtering is going to be important. So you're going to need to know how to do that a little bit. Now, don't worry about clicking around in here, you cannot break anything. You can kind of get yourself confused within the screen, but you're not going to break anything, you can always get back to the beginning. So click on filters. Now, right now, we're showing revenues, right? It's broken down by revenue type, so you can also break this down in all different ways. So let's say, okay, now I want to know, well, what's the revenue by fund? So now you can click on fund, and now you've got them all broken down here. Same thing, you can keep filtering down. So now I want to know what all the revenue is for fun, for the water fund, so you can go into here, enterprise funds, I mean. Now, let's say, oh, gosh, how did I get here? How do I get back? You've got a little back arrow here. Or you can go to history, and you can also go, go back one that way. If you have this annoying little box in your way, you can either click out here in the screen, or you can just X out of it, either way, very friendly program. Let's say you want to break it down by departments, so now you can go in there by departments. Giving me a little trouble here. There we go. So now it's all broken down by departments, so that's revenue. So same thing, information up here, you can also then, well, now it makes more sense to have this type of a chart, because you can do all kinds of things like that. Now, let's see, let's go back to views for a sec. Now let's look at, I'm not going to go through as many of these, because really the functionality in all of these is the same. So it's just about once you get in there and what you want to look at. So here's expenditures of the entire city, for example. And let's say, instead of by category, I want to see it by department. So now I'm going to go to filters. We're showing expenses. Now we want it broken down, oh, give me trouble, by departments. So there we go. So now you've got it all, expenses by departments. And now we want to see, let's see if we want to see comm dev, that'd be a good one. So community development. Well, now the, the table doesn't mean much, because you're already selected by departments, right? So it's not giving you more options, you're just seeing the total. So let's say, well, what about the divisions within, depart, within comm dev? You can actually go here and even drill down into divisions. So you can see that here. So now I'm into the divisions of comm dev. So you can see in all the different ways. So if, like, it's more important for the departments that have a lot of divisions, like police or fire, and you can really see what those areas are like. But what if, let's go back to the, and you can always go back to the beginning, so let's go back. I want to start all over with the expenses. Okay, so I go back, click on the view, get me back to the start. What if I want to see, what's an expenditure? I would want to see, let's say, what's our electric bill? So we can go into services. There's the electric. Let's say I want to see that by department. There again, broken down, department. So here we are. So obviously, utility operations, wow, what's going on there? Well, obviously, that's where all of your utilities are. Okay, and then let's say I want to break it down by funds. Same thing, there you go. And the same thing, enterprise funds, that's where all the utilities are, so that's where the expense is. Okay, so one more thing, and then we're getting close to the end here. Capital expenditures. So the difference in this versus the capital plan book is the capital plan book is designed to take the current, take the budget and go out into the future for five years. This is designed to capture the historical. So if we go in here, we'll get rid of the no project. The no project for your information is typically like vehicles, equipment, that type of thing that doesn't have a, a project number. So let's go into the capital expenditures. Let's take a couple here just to look at. So let's say, street preservation would be a good one. So let's take a look at that. So now, you've looked at the book, you know what the future looks like for that, but what about the historical? So six million, 6.8 back in 2022, 7.8 2023. So it kind of gives you a historical perspective of the expenditures for that, for those projects. You can also, it looks like we only go back to 2022 here. You can also, I don't want to see that many years, you can get rid of a year. I want to start with 2023. So it kind of narrows down the data for you, if there's any different number of ways to look at this data. Another good one might be, let's look at the fire department, for example. So the fire department hasn't had a lot of expenditures, but now we're seeing, because of the public safety tax, we're seeing all the projects that are going to be popping in in the future. So if you want to look at the historical versus where they're going now with the benefit of having those resources. Okay, so I think, see if there's anything else here. I mean, this is just incredibly powerful system. Like I said, you can't break it. Go in there, look around. There's also a way to, to, there's a button at the top, the help button. You can actually, you can either email me directly, or email somebody in finance to get an answer. There's a help button up here, so the community, anybody can contact the city of Prescott, send in a question, and we'll catch it and we'll respond to it. So there's that.
Mayor Potem, you had a question for Catherine?
Catherine, I can't even imagine how many hours it took to load all this data. Mark, did you do all that by yourself? When you get into this, will you be keeping, I, I think Eric kind of touched on that, and I wasn't sure if it was the same question, but you'll have like a five-year look back? And then the, the fifth year, or as the year goes by, the latest one will just drop off?
We have, we have data in the system going back to 2021, and we will just maintain that. So anything, as we go forward, we will always have that data, we can choose to have it in a report or not, so it's always there.
So it's all in real time? So it just, it updates?
This is the night before, so all of this information is from last night.
Oh, that's amazing.
Everything up through last night.
Thank you.
Yep. And we can also schedule, if you guys want a little bit more training, we can schedule some one-on-one trainings with you, anything, we're always extremely happy to help, and sometimes it helps me know what the questions are, to be able to frame some of the reports and the stories that go out to you guys and go out to the public. So I think with that, are there any questions?
Well, thank you, Catherine, and I would recommend to all members of the council to start playing around with this, because I think we'll hear from the community, since we've been advocating the benefits of this Open Gov program, so that people can monitor, especially the tax, the 478 tax. So Open Gov is going to provide that type of transparency, but I think as people start to use it, some people can navigate programs very easily, kind of a generational thing. And others have a little more difficulty doing that. So if we can participate ourselves, and I think we can advise our residents a little more effectively, directly when they come up with suggestions or concerns. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. Thanks again. Councilman Montoya?
I just wanted to say, I appreciate the presentation, but I'll be one of those people who probably needs a one-on-one, because that was a lot. And it was, I mean, it seems like it's a very thorough tool, so I'd love to be able to figure out how to make better use of it, so.
We're always happy, happy to come do a training, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, city clerk, I guess we're moving to item B in our study session.
Presentation and discussion regarding the annual update from the Tourism Advisory Committee.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'm John Heine, I'm the Community Outreach Director. I am here simply to introduce the people who will be presenting to you today. We have members of the Tourism Advisory Committee here, three of which will be presenting, and one is here for moral support. So I'll introduce those folks all together right now, and then I'll introduce the first presenter. So we have Margot Christensen, who is the Chair of the Tourism Advisory Committee, she'll be presenting later. She's sitting next to Jim Dawson, who's the moral support guy. And then we have Dennis Gallagher, who will be presenting, and Matt Bressard, who will be presenting. Your first presenter today will be Dennis Gallagher, and he would like to present from this podium, so we'll do it from up here. And I'm going to make sure this clicker works. There it is.
Good afternoon, Mayor Good, Mayor Potem, council and staff. Appreciate the opportunity to present this afternoon. I'm here to help the Tourism Advisory Committee present our annual report to the council, and I will be assisting with Margot Christensen, committee chair, Matt Bressard, vice chair, and I'm just a member. Okay, the committee members consist of 11, seven of those representing the hospitality industry, three local business community leaders or members, and one city council member appointed by council. One is Ed Kellerman with the Pippin Museum, myself, Dennis Gallagher, Western Heritage Center, James Dawson, who is here, he's a citizen. And Robert Combs, Visitor Center, Autumn Klein, retailer on Whiskey Row, Tamara Burks, Hilton Garden Inn, Nick Medina, Medina Hospitality, of course, Lois Breworth, council liaison, and we have one vacant seat. Okay, the history of Tourism Advisory Council or Committee and the 3% bed tax. The Tourism Advisory Committee was formed on August 29th, 2017, as a standing committee when the transient lodging or the bed tax dollars were brought under the management of the city of Prescott. Initially, an ad hoc committee since 2009. It acts as, in an advisory capacity only. And we have a five-year strategic plan to be used as a guide for future programs, make recommendations to city staff and city council, and the committee reports, or supports the city's tourism staff on matters of local concern and the promotion of tourism. And then we present annually to the council. We administer annual grant allocations that will come later today, and we support the destination marketing organization as needed. I'll let you take a minute to read through this, and then I'll point out the part that's highlighted later. Okay, I think that's probably enough time. The proceeds to be accounted for in a separate fund and to be used for the promotion of tourism and development of recreational uses. Okay, our vision is to present, Prescott is a welcoming and unforgettable year-round destination, attracting visitors, seeking to experience authentic western heritage and unparalleled natural beauty. Our mission, we attract visitors to Prescott and enhance our community's quality of life by inspiring a love and respect for our natural beauty, rich history, and hometown experience. Okay, I'm going to take it, turn it over to Matt Bressard now, he's going to cover a number of the slides, so, right here?
All right, good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm going to talk about our guiding principles. Our first, engage residents and industry stakeholders. I think the tourism office has done a great job of this annual meeting that was held in January that Christina put together, had a really amazing turnout. Enhance, enrich, and simplify the visitor experience. Emphasize the quality of visitors over the quantity of tourists. Consider the impact of our work on existing infrastructure and community resources. Support the responsible use of our natural resources and assets. Seek to enhance the quality of life and increase economic opportunity, and to preserve our community's exceptional hospitality and create an environment that is welcoming to all. Some of our highlights from 2024 and fiscal year '25, about, it was in 2022, we had a strategic plan, a five-year strategic plan, and we've achieved 50, 57, oops, sorry, achieved 57% completion on those items from the strategic plan, which is above the industry's average of 40%. We filmed new content, added an additional 1,800 hotel rooms booked, six media influencers, influencers were hosted, and as far as media goes, 168 features from August 1st to January 5th. That equal to 1.5 billion impressions and a return, our advertising value equivalency of 38.6 million. 45.5% social media engagement growth, and through our contract with Bright Marketing, that's featured over 104 local businesses that they've promoted. Annually, the tourism office supports over 20 local nonprofits, as well as the Summer Concert Series, World's Oldest Rodeo, Arizona's Christmas City, the Whiskey Off-Road, and then new this year, the Trans Rockies Gravel Bike Event, and then of course, our four wonderful museums in the area. This is a list of those additional nonprofits that, that tourism supports, and all of these events, you know, combined bring in thousands and thousands of tourists and dollars. And I'm going to turn it over to Margot Christensen. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and council. Thank you so much for having us here today. I am going to talk a little bit about bed tax. The legal name, of course, you all know, transient occupancy tax takes a couple different forms in different cities. BBB, Bed, Booze, and Board Tax is a common form. We adopted the bed tax at 3% collection 25 years ago. So that's what the hotels collect currently to use for destination marketing and management purposes, as you'll see on the slide. Currently, the budget is 1.6 million, I believe, for the anticipated collections for the next fiscal year. And how tourism dollars benefit our community based on 2022, 252 million on lodging, food, beverage, retail, entertainment, local transportation. Visitors spend a lot of money in this community. They come here for two or three, four days, they drop their money, and they leave. It is a fantastic revenue stream for all of us, bed tax and sales tax alone. Let's see. So what does that mean? On this slide, in sales tax, 3,900 jobs, approximately 4 million in city sales tax, which equates to salaries of police officers, firefighters, parks and rec, the streets, library, I mean, the sales tax alone that benefits our community just from visitor spending is pretty huge. So the current level of investment in marketing that you will actually see on this next slide, as comparison to our competitors that we compete with in visitor spending and tourism, Cottonwood, Williams, and Sedona, Prescott is a little bit underfunded, I would say, in the amount that we invest in marketing. We don't spend as much in marketing as we probably should. We just don't have the money right now to do that. We spend quite a bit in grants and operations and other expenditures other than just pure marketing as compared to our competitors. But we've gotten a lot better in the last 20-some years, and so we're spending more and more and investing more in marketing. We have a little ways to go, I think, as far as we could stack up as compared to this slide, as far as we invest compared to our competitors.
Margot, are you working on trying to apply for grants?
Pardon me?
Are you working on trying to apply for grants? Grant funding?
Applying for grants in the tourism office?
Right.
I would have to defer to John and Christine. Yeah.
There are several grants that are available, but we don't have the staff bandwidth to constantly go out and look for these grants. And a lot of them are going to be more on the development side for recreational amenities. So we've mentioned with Sam Rice, and we have some software that's pulling grants that are relevant to both departments. And I think we've applied for one or two, but we haven't been awarded anything at this point in time.
So how does Cottonwood generate so much more marketing dollars than we do?
Will you pull that slide up again, Margot?
If I can know how to go back.
So they're just funded more out of their general fund or what?
Yes, and I want to be clear on this slide. So each of the destinations have varying levels of visitation, tax rates, so it's really hard to compare apples to apples. When we only look at the marketing line, marketing dollars that are available for each destination, that's what we're looking at here. So how they're funded is a little bit of a trickier question to answer rather than this is what they've set aside for marketing. Now, that's important nonetheless, because in the world of marketing, when you're not spending enough as your competitors, you won't show up in all the places that they're showing up. You won't even stay relevant when you're trying to attract the same level of tourist. We have one stakeholder in this community, love her to death. She emails me every month, and she's like, hey, look, Williams and Cottonwood are in this magazine, but Prescott's not in this magazine. So we are stretching every dollar we possibly can, but we can't show up everywhere else because we just don't have those funds set aside for marketing.
Councilman Gamboge. Do you have a slide that shows what the tourist revenue is on these same cities?
That's a great question. So with the Tourism Advisory Committee, we've had a conversation about having a financial workshop this summer. I'm looking at available dates, but in that workshop, we're going to review these questions. We're going to see what revenue opportunities we have to kind of get Prescott where we should be.
And I understand Sedona, what's Williams spend their money on?
So Williams is the gateway to the Grand Canyon.
So that's the train, huh?
Yep, they've got the train, they've got Route 66. So they not only make a ton of money, but I think they have the highest bed tax rate of all four of us. They recently increased, and please don't quote me on it, but it was a very, very impressive increase because they were able to do it at the council level. They didn't have to go to a vote to the public, and they just went as high as they possibly could, but I will get you that rate soon.
I believe it's 5%. Does that sound right?
I think so, but I'd have to be certain.
I can jump in, it's 5.5%.
Thank you.
And what's the attraction to Cottonwood?
I also love Cottonwood, and Old Town Cottonwood is great. They've got so many vineyards, and the eateries in downtown Cottonwood is phenomenal. They're doing a lot of outdoor recreation and OTH, like off-road trails, and they've got several events, they've got music in the park, too. So we've got phenomenal competitors. I think Northern Arizona is where it's at. We're getting all the attraction from the rest of the state. It certainly is the prettiest part of the state. But with that being said, we have to find a way to still be competitive with other attractive areas.
Thank you. Councilman Montoya.
Dallin, did you want to jump in and say something before?
If I could just jump in real quick. Thinking about this, you know, there's the revenue side. On the expenditure side, there's also, you know, how much are we spending on events that other places aren't spending on events? How much are we spending on staff or on other services, the phenomenal website that we have? Like, there's different ways of spending these dollars to still have some effect. And it's not all marketing, but when you compare the marketing, obviously, the, in the advertising world, we don't have as many dollars, but we are spending them on other things like having our great events.
Man, you just teed me up.
This is my question to the TAC committee members and also the Tourism Department. I guess my sense is that, based on what I've seen in the budgets with the bed tax revenues, we're doing a lot with not a lot of money. And I guess that's my assessment. And I wonder, I mean, we just had a very long, prolonged conversation about one of the events that happens in our community. There's a lot of passion around it, a lot of kind of charge around it, and I think we had a good, productive conversation, but I guess I'm wondering, you know, the way I think of, and Margot, I think you did a great job lining this out, is, you know, there's a lot of really positive revenue that comes from tourism. And so I think it's, you know, you've got to spend money to make money sometimes, is the old expression, and I think there's a little bit of that where I'm looking at, you know, I've been to all those cities, and I think Prescott is the best by a lot. And so I think there's a compelling story to tell about that. And I wonder if, you know, there's not, obviously not in this budget cycle because we're about to close the books on it, but I wonder going forward if we could redefine the scope of how some of the funny mechanisms happen around marketing or special events or things like that, and if you guys have thoughts on that.
Yes, thank you, Brandon, Councilman. I think there is more to discuss regarding expenditures out of bed tax and what's appropriate maybe out of bed tax versus general fund. You know, would parking garage maintenance be something that should be coming out of bed tax? You know, that's something to, maybe you talk about in the future. The return on investment in marketing over parking garage maintenance, you know, might be something to talk about, so.
Just to clarify, are you saying, does parking garage maintenance currently come out of bed tax?
I believe we have 48,000.
Yes, there's 171,000 of internal operating transfers that come out of bed tax towards the general fund. And the parking garage maintenance is one of that, but water for the parks. There's a lot of evidence that could support those charges. It just depends on how you define what bed tax should be used for.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Councilman Moore?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Ted, to answer your question, what Cottonwood has, it's the same thing as Casa Grande.
My favorite city.
Exactly. I did want to make a comment. I often feel, and I love what you guys do, you're amazing, all of you, but I often feel that a lot of our tourism emphasis is on the downtown area. And I know when we were having discussions two years ago or so, when the Granite Creek Corridor was being revitalized and a lot of work was being done there, and I went to one of the tourism committee meetings, I think at the Haciampa, and there was a lot of talk about wayfinding. And I think oftentimes wayfinding is used maybe in a downtown area, but I would like to make a suggestion to your committee that maybe we partner more closely with the Parks and Rec Department and do more wayfinding for people who come here for tourism, for our outdoor amenities, not just the downtown area. And the reason I say that is because I have experiences frequently, including just last night. I was just getting back to the trailhead at Rossar in Highway 89 last night, almost dark, and a man pulls up in a beautiful big pickup truck, and he jumps out, he goes, can I ask you a question? And little did he know, he was talking to a person that uses that trail like five days a week and is on the city council, an avid outdoor person, but he starts asking me questions like, can you connect to the Peavine Trail from here? Well, the answer is, absolutely, you can. But I think, I remember Sam Rice talking about when we had a presentation from Recreation, how frequently she'll get phone calls at the Parks and Rec office from somebody who's on a trail, and they're lost, and they don't know how to get back to the trailhead. And she literally goes out there and she rescues them. She literally herself goes out there and brings them back to the trailhead. I have been stopped so many times on the Peavine Trail by people that start maybe at Watson Lake Park, the Ramada, and they think, well, do that trail that goes around the lake? And after two or three hours, they're like, I have no idea where I am, and I don't know how to get back to where my car is. And so that's wayfinding, but with recreation emphasis. So I think it would be really fun to see the tourism and the Parks and Rec Department partner together and improve that experience because I have helped countless people on a regular basis, where am I and how do I get back to my car? Happens a lot.
Thank you, Councilman Moore. I could not agree with you more that, more. And we have a liaison, Joe Baines, of course, was our liaison, and of course, we have a new Parks and Rec Director now. And we, absolutely, Parks and Rec and tourism, they go hand in hand, absolutely. And I think John Heine and Christina would agree with that. So the more we can work together with Parks and Rec, absolutely, so.
Because that's a big part of our tourism. People come here to, you know, hike our trails and to visit our recreational amenities beyond just the downtown area, but they often get lost.
Yep, yep, absolutely. Any more questions before I?
Mayor Potem can tell me.
Yes, thank you. You know, I was just, I had a vacation rental, and we paid, I think, 12.43% tax, 12.43%. It was just reduced to 11.325, and I wasn't clear why. Does anybody know why that tax was reduced?
Was that a 30-plus day for that rental?
No, it was weekend. But I just noticed, I looked it up, because just for the council's benefit, the city collects 2% of that. Then you've got the transient lodging for the city also, that's an additional 3%. But the state gets 6.32%. So I have read some background on these taxes. I visited, I think I was in Boston, and they had a 17% lodging tax. So what is, for the City of Prescott, what is an average tax? That's a lot of tax.
I don't have that in front of me, 12 point, what is the exact?
It's 12.43.
Not a 30 plus, just this 12.3, 12.075? I don't know.
The department that was just here would be better to answer that than. So the bed tax is a flat 3%, and then the city sales tax are on top of that in the county, and then the state taxes are on that, too. So that is applied to lodging and short-term properties as well.
Yeah, I just pulled it up. So currently, it is 11.325% for it, but I was wondering what the reduction was, because that's probably going to hurt you if we have another reduction. I know rental, but this doesn't apply to the, it was just for long-term rentals, where we got the reduction, and I know that hurt us a little over $2 million.
Yeah, long-term, if it's a 30-plus, then the.
That was a reduction.
Yeah, eliminate the, I believe, the only tax would be the state and city tax, I think. I'm not sure. I don't have that in front of me, I'm so.
Yeah, and I'm looking at it right now, it's 5%.
But we are very low in our taxes compared to other cities. We very, very, and I will tell you, visitors do not scrutinize at the hotel front desk. Nobody is arguing about our tax rate.
Right.
Absolutely. I mean, we're very, very.
We are very low.
Yeah, very low.
But what do you think you need in terms of funding to be able to do some of these things? How much more would you anticipate? Have you ever looked into that, Christina? Just curious.
Yes, so I'm going to start that off with an invitation. So whenever our financial workshop is in July, I'll have those numbers in our wish list for you. We will also have a creative brainstorming of all the different ways this department could make money. We can look at things like a tax increase, but there's other revenue opportunities that we have. So I'm hoping to make it a fun workshop where I'm going to have speakers who've done a bed tax increase in their community. I'm going to have it be an educational session, too, and then hopefully collectively we can decide what's best to raise that number. Even if it's a percent or two, it's going to make life-changing results for not only tourism, but the residents in this community.
Well, and make sure, too, that you make, drive home the point, the return on investment, because this is something that not a lot of people value, but we have to really stress that return on our investment. Thank you.
Thank you for that advice.
And if they're not lost on the Peavine Trail, they'll have time to come into the city and spend some money at a restaurant. There you go. Councilman Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'm looking at the page Tourism Financially Supports, and so I understand how the tourism budget supports some of the events. How does it support 20-plus local nonprofits? What does that mean?
So, go ahead. That's in the form of the grant application process, so go ahead, Christina.
Yes, so we have a line item in our budget, Tourism Grants, and every year, those 20 nonprofits apply through this process. It's a six-page application, and the Tourism Advisory Committee reviews those applications and awards funds appropriately. They can win up to $5,000, and a lot of those longstanding events that were on the very next slide are longstanding grant recipients.
Thank you. In addition to that, so how are we helping Charlotte Hall Museum, Fitton and Museum of Indigenous People and the Western Heritage Center?
Those are attractions, so we give them marketing money as well. And then they also get event funding. So Charlotte Hall is a perfect example. They do the Pi Am Festival every year, so they get tourism grant dollars for that specific festival, and then they get grant funding for annual advertisements.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Freworth?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, since I've been the liaison on this group, I've learned a whole lot about how we spend bed tax dollars. And the one thing that continues to keep surprising me, and I think, you know, with every group that comes forward, you know, we just learned a lot about with the Whiskey Off-Road, how much money we're spending. And things like the fact that Bean Peaks was expanding, these guys, we had a ribbon cutting out there to show all the mechanized equipment we had to buy out of bed tax so that our fire department could get up the mountain to save people who have seriously hurt themselves along the way. So I'm constantly surprised, you know, when you think about the tourists, midweek, all that we love, everyone loves, all the residents love, the, you know, all the music that's happening down on Tuesdays and Thursdays, that's all paid from with bed tax dollars. So, and I think these guys are going to try to get to this slide that they have up on the screen for a while, but there's a. the screen for a while, but there's a big difference between destination management and destination marketing. And a lot of what we're doing is, we are using our money for a lot of destination management. And you're hearing these guys planting the seed, that either the Pi has to grow, or we have to make different decisions as a city of where the money of bed tax gets spent. Should it be spent as much on management as marketing? So I'm going to try and get these guys back to their presentation. Thank you.
Well, this is the last slide, but you're right, Councilwoman, that we have a fine balance between destination management and marketing. And we have to strategically know how to balance that. The trend with other municipalities is destination management. And we have to know how we're going to play that fine line, I think, in the next few years. Sedona, as an example, they marketed and marketed and marketed and marketed. And they became very busy and maybe too many tourists, and we don't want that. We want quality of life for our residents, and that's where that fine line is. We want Parks and Rec. We want visitors to be cognizant and aware of our surroundings, and be very careful and take care of our community. And we want our residents to experience through events like courthouse lighting and the whiskey boot drop, and all of those events that bed tax provides funding for. So we really are very strategic right now about balancing marketing versus management. And that's in our strategic plan over the next few years. But, you know, we're going to need the money for that, and we are going to have to budget very strategically in order to accomplish the goals that the TAC has over the next few years, so. And I think that is the last of the presentation. Do you have any more questions, Councilman?
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate Lois's comment and your comment. There needs to be a balance between marketing and management. I owned a business in Sedona for nine years, and I was in Sedona every single week. And we need to find the right balance for the quality of life for the residents and not just get overrun with tourists.
Yeah.
With Sedona particularly, there's only one way in and one way out of town, Highway 89A, basically, and 179 on the south. The problem is, the traffic was so bad that residents wouldn't shop in their own community because it was bumper-to-bumper traffic all the way through the main commercial corridor because of all the tourists. And it wasn't really tourism that you want. It's ATV rentals and peak geek tours, and these people are just ripping up the desert and the natural landscape. And I don't think that's beneficial for anybody, the city or the environment. And so, yeah, maybe tourists came and had a great time, and they left, but it wasn't quality of life for the residents. So that management piece is really important.
Yeah, totally agree. We learned a lot from our colleagues in Sedona, many of whom I personally know, and we learned a lesson from Sedona, that we're, that's not what we're going to be, and we're going to balance everything as much as we can. There's enough tourism to go around. We have a couple hundred more rooms in the market that are going to be built here in the next few years, and we need to help those hotels. But we don't want to overrun things and create too much demand. So we are very, very aware of that balance. Anything else, Christina?
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I do think it's also important to just look ahead to what's coming. So you guys have been doing the grant applications. The council will be getting that ahead. So Patrick, you know, also is your learning. So they make the recommendation, the council's going to approve, so you'll see that, I think it's going to be in the, is it the July 8th package we're getting it? Yeah.
Yes, and that is the structure of this meeting. So the last meeting in July, or I'm sorry, the last meeting in June, the month we're in now, the Tourism Advisory Committee will present on the year that we've had before. And that's also intentional because we want to be educational, because the first meeting in July, we are bringing 34 contracts to you for approval. So we want the last meeting and the first meeting to be hand in hand, so you're well-informed on everything TAC does and what their approval is, and then the contracts will come before you at the next meeting.
And just to add to that, it's so important that we have contracts, so these are not gifts. We're not giving gifts out to people. They have to perform, and there's a contract to go along with it. So that should be, these guys do a really good job of vetting it, a lot of hours spent doing that. So it should be well-vetted by the time we get it. But then, could you just hit some of the, what's really cool coming up at the very end of the last slide about some of the big marketing initiatives coming in the next year?
Yes. So 2026, next year is going to be a very big year for the state of Arizona. America is celebrating their 250th birthday. There's also a 100-year celebration of Route 66, and cycling and mountain biking will be our third focus for next year. So we are dedicating staff time and marketing funds to these three initiatives to make sure Prescott is seen and heard and an active participant in everything that's happening next year in the state.
Thank you. You guys do an amazing job.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Margo.
Any more questions?
Thank you, Christina. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Dennis. Obviously, a great area for continued focus, funding, and performance. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to America 250 for sure. Thank you. All those meetings adjourned.